I'd like to call the November 19 Zion City Council Meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here.
Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremer, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We all pledge to our own Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Pastor Carl Williams. Pastor Carl Williams is going to lead us in prayer this evening.
Good evening. Mayor McKinney and the other council members, thank you for the opportunity to pray tonight. And citizens of Zion, thank you. Good evening. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Son of the Son and Holy Spirit, we call on you tonight. We always need you and we ask for your mind and hand to be upon us. Thank you for being who you are. You're inscribable, you're incomprehensible, you're invincible, you're irresistible. Your office is manifold, your promise is sure, your light is matchless, your goodness is limitless, your mercy is everlasting, your love never changes, your word is enough, your grace is sufficient, your reign is righteous, and your yoke is easy, and your burden is light. Do you know him? I'm really glad Lockridge knew him, our king. King, we ask that you guide our hearts and minds here tonight. We pray you would awaken the people of Zion to what could be by showing us, reveal to us, what you can do through those who are willing to stand for what is great and not for the idea that it's good enough. We pray your will be done in the city of Zion as it is in heaven. As Thanksgiving Day approaches, we thank you for our city's spiritual foundation, for the many blessings and provisions we have received over the years, and for the ups and downs our city has journeyed through, hopefully making us wiser. We are reminded throughout our city how and who has delivered us, and we see it in some of the names on the streets we live on. Ezekiel Avenue means living on God's strength. Elisha Avenue, my God is salvation. Two street names that, if lived out, could change a person's whole, a whole lot. Lord, we know that the strength or weaknesses of any organization or city is its people. Help us to believe those who have lived here before us that you are the changemaker. You are the one who will make this city a place of hope, a place of peace, and a safe place to live, a place to experience the growth for our faith, our children, and our whole community as a people and a resource. So we ask you tonight to provide our city council and the staff of our city and we, the people, with wisdom, strength, love, mercy, and courage to make decisions that are best for all of us, the people of Zion. May we all be a blessing to one another during our time here together and as we leave this place as well. To God be the glory. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Now, as customary, I'd also like for us to have a moment of silence to show some respect for our first responders and our military. Thank you very much. Item number four, agenda changes. Commissioners, are there any agenda changes? Is there a motion to carry out the agenda as Rick so moved?
Say.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number five, citizens' comments. All right. Quiet night in the city of Zion. Oh, this young lady that you? We usually request for citizen comments that you sign in, but since you're here, please move forward and state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Michelle Adle and I live in Zion. And good evening, everybody. My husband and I are currently going through the application process, hoping to win a license to dispense recreational cannabis. We're doing this in honor in the memory of Lynette Renee Nagel, my younger sister, who died from ALS four years ago, last May. Lynette's RX will donate a percentage of our profits to the ALS Chicago, Illinois chapter. Lynette's RX will also donate to several organizations here in Zion. We feel like this is a good fit here in Zion, where we'd like to plant our roots. Lynette's RX will help the disproportionately impacted areas. After we are established, we would like to donate to the city of Zion's fireworks display, have a community garden, help maintain parks. We want to share the wealth. Lynette's RX may be recreational, but we will treat each individual as a patient. Lynette's RX will have caring compassionate staff who will discuss any and all concerns on an individual basis. There are many people who don't have the means or the money to get a medical cannabis card. Now their caregivers can come to us to purchase medical-grade 100% organic cannabis and cannabis products. We will carry items such as Charlotte's Web. Charlotte's Web has no THC. Charlotte's Web helps children who have hundreds of seizures a day to only having one or two. Lynette's RX will be a great asset for the city of Zion. Thank you. Permission to approach the bench?
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Ed. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on November 5, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Approval of not-released of closed session minutes of a meeting held on November 5, 2019 at 8:08 PM.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills vouchers 133461 through 133589 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $433,397.44.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Receive and place on file treasurer's report for fiscal year ending April 30, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, there was only one motion that I found, which was Roman Albron was placed twice in the wrong payroll column. I think he should be placed once in 50 to 75,000.
Can I address real quick the, if you don't mind, the reason behind that? Our, the way our payroll system works, if somebody has a change of status, they're assigned a new ID number in the system. So when the report generated, it pulled his ID, pulled his payroll ID numbers under there, so it showed up twice, rather than adding them together and putting it in the correct column. So it showed up twice in the 25 to 50, he should've shown up as one in the 50 to 75. So, thank you for catching that.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
In a second.
In a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item seven, considering passing resolution as follows. 7A, truth in taxation law resolution per Administrator Nagel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The truth in taxation resolution is required for taxing bodies that are going to increase their tax levy by more than 5%. That is not what we're doing, but what we've always done for transparency purposes is we still adopt a resolution saying we will not go up by more than 5%, which would trigger the truth in taxation resolution as well as a public hearing. But like I said, rather than be silent about it, we want to put something in place out there saying we're not going to go more than the 4.99%. We still will have a public hearing, though not required, just so that we can have discussion about how the levy is calculated, what goes into it, everything. That public hearing will be on December 17. We are required by statute to put an estimate of levy 20 days, at least 20 days in advance of that, so this satisfies that requirement just by having this in there. We have in here a 4.99% increase, we just put that in as basically a placeholder saying we're not going to go up by more than 5%. Under the property tax extension limitation law, PTL, we can only go up by consumer price index, which is 2.1% plus some levy on new construction, so we're not even going to be able to get to that anyway, even if we did max it. But what I've done in the past, just for public and for refresher for council and for new commissioners, is I present various options as, under the ordinance, to have ready, a flat levy, a mid-range levy, and a maximum levy. We can discuss it at public hearing, discuss the pros and cons, what the effect is, and then council can make a motion on whatever levy they decide to adopt, anywhere in between or below. But, so this is just for transparency purposes, to adopt, to have in public records.
And so that our citizens are very, well, we're not voting on this this evening. Thank you, just wanted to make sure that was clear. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the truth in taxation law resolution.
Second. Is there discussion or question? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. Approving and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Zion and school district 126 per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have before you an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Zion Fire Rescue Department and school district 126 for the purpose of providing compensation for off-duty personnel that participate in large-scale events at the high schools, such as the upcoming drill they have in January. The intergovernmental agreement has been reviewed by our legal team and also been reviewed by the school, and they're both have agreed with the language as written. The IGA does not cover stuff we do on duty normally, such as the football games. This is simply to cover the overtime compensation costs for anybody called an off-duty participant. So I respectfully request your approval of the attached IGA.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 8B regarding the disposition of surplus property per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor and Commissioners. Council has previously approved the purchase of a, I put the wrong thing in there, a back truck front end loader. Included within the financing agreement is the trade-in value of $17,000 for the 1993 John Deere front-end loader. This piece of equipment is required to be placed in a surplus status in order to be utilized as a trade-in for the new purchase. Staff is requesting approval of the John Deere front-end loader to be declared surplus.
I'll make that motion. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 8C, to lease certain property approximately 8,760 square feet situated on the 27th Street right-of-way for the purpose of having driveway access and additional parking per Director Iyantin.
Thank you, Your Honor. James and Angela Gilmore, who reside at 40230 North Low North Road in Beach Park, are requesting a lease approximately 8,760 square feet of unapproved 27th Street. We would like to use it for driveway access and additional parking. Staff recommends that we approve the lease at a standard rate of 250 a year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I had a question about what sets the standard rate.
The Honorable Commissioner, about four years ago, that was put in place, it has not been changed since. That's the rate that they use for standard residential leases since then.
Additional questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 8D, consider zoning docket 19-Z-4 requesting a tax amendment to add reserve sections 102-601 through 102-700 and 102-701 through 102-800 to the Zion Municipal Code per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff are recommending that we approve the tax amendment to add the reserved sections 102-601 through 102-700 and 102-701 through 102-800 to the municipal code to expand the zoning code sections for future use. At the November 7, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended to approve the tax amendment.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? This is just to make space for any additional ordinances we want to put in. Is that correct? This particular tax amendment?
Yes, it expands our zoning section.
Is there no questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 8E, consider zoning docket 19-Z-5 requesting a tax amendment adding Article 8, Section 102-601 through 102-611, adult-use cannabis to Zion Municipal Code to be allowed only in certain districts and regulated with a special use permit per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning and Zoning Commission has had several meetings regarding adult-use cannabis zoning requirements. The commission is recommending that only be allowed in certain districts and regulate it with a special use permit. They have also recommended buffer zones from schools and churches. At the November 7, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommend to approve the tax amendment with a bulk of 6,000.
Is there a motion?
To approve adoption of the adult-use cannabis sections 102-601 through 102-610.
Second.
Is there discussion? Yeah, I have some questions. So I noticed in some of the business cannabis businesses, there are buffer zones, and they vary depending on the business. But the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't consider buffers for parks or for daycare centers or day schools, places where children will be at. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, they just felt they would cover the schools and the churches and that, they felt that was, would meet the requirements of what they were suggesting.
So if we approve this, these sections for zoning, could we go back and reconsider the buffer zone for parks and daycare, or what would the process be? Because I think they should be included. I think there should be a buffer zone for parks. I think there should be a buffer zone for daycare also.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to address that?
Absolutely.
How about the council?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and clerk, city council.
Zoning ordinances can be amended, just like the zoning ordinance is in itself ammended. This too can be amended. I'd also like to point out that all the cannabis users under this that would be allowed, not use word permitted, but allowed in the city of Zion if this were to approve, are subject to a special use. A special use is governed by state statute under the municipal code under Section 11131.1, and it only has, it only is permitted after a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city. And it allows for the classification and granting of permission subject to conditions reasonably necessary to meet substandard. We were educated by the second district case from 1977, Cornell versus Perry and Page, that a municipality is justified in denying special use permit for land used otherwise qualified items and enabling orders if it, if the denial, there's a real and substantial relation to public health, safety, moral, and general welfare. That case in his project also allows us to impose special use conditions to govern nuisances or hazardousnesses associated with that uniform, for example, offering of, meaning cash and land donations or dedications can be imposed as conditions. So, I don't know how to put this, but colloquially, there's two bites of the apple, that you can always come back and change a zoning ordinance to another ordinance, just like this one, and like we're doing to other ordinances tonight. And also, before any time we would come in for an applicant, a permittee, if you will, they would have to go through a hearing at both the zoning level and essentially here. And at that point in time, conditions can be imposed. I hope that helps answer your question.
Yeah, all right. So approving these sections for rezoning, applicants would also have to apply for a special use permit. So the first step is that we're going to allow it in the locations that are listed here in this ordinance. Second is that any cannabis business would have to come back before the council and ask for a special use permit, which is also governed by our ordinances.
Our, because they have state code.
Yeah.
And yes, that's correct. I would not at the zoning hearing, but that's, I believe, a very specifically there in tech, that they would come back with a special use permit for that additional hearing level and additional later of hearing for public input and conditions to possibly be imposed later.
Okay. I have a few more questions. Commissioner, while you're looking up the questions, it was Article 13, not Article 8. Had the Roman numerals transfix? Okay, yes. So we've got various kinds of cannabis businesses, and then I'm looking at a chart on PH15 of the ordinance. So we're not allowing cannabis, any cannabis businesses in residential zones. And some of the cannabis businesses have buffers, not all of them, but out of residential districts. One is like 50 feet, another's 250 feet, so it just depends on the kind of business. So we also have adult cannabis use craft growers, which according to this ordinance, we're going to allow in our highway business districts HB2. It's going to be primarily at 173 and Lewis Avenue, Green Bay Road. Or we have HB2 in the central business district.
No, central business goes from Shiloh to 28, south of 28. And you've got highway business north from Shiloh to basically 17th Street, and then it goes south from 28th Street to 34th.
Okay. But the reason I'm singling this out is because the craft growers will be allowed to apply for a special use permit for consumption also. So that, that's different than all the other cannabis businesses. We don't allow, according to this ordinance, we don't allow consumption anywhere except for possibly the hospital, which could apply for a special use permit. So why was, why are the craft growers singled out and given the opportunity to apply for consumption permits?
I was on the impression if we regulated onsite consumption and only allowed it with specialists at the hospital, that the only district would be allowed.
Okay. I'm sorry, Adam, I'm reading this wrong. What I meant, it's not consumption, it's dispensary. So why is the, why are the craft growers allowed to also dispense in the highway district? That's the only difference. In all these businesses, they're allowed to dispense. Yes, our economic development director, Charlotte Bronson, would you step forward? She's been working on this quite a bit, so she has about as much knowledge. Is anyone about it?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Clerk. The craft grow of all of the five cannabis users, the craft grow is a little different. It's more of a hybrid. There are five businesses total for cannabis businesses. There are the cultivation centers, whose main purpose is to cultivate the cannabis seed from seed to plant. There is the infusers, which take the cannabis plant and breaks it down into different ways to infuse it into different items to be consumed. There are transportation businesses, which, whose responsibility is to transport the cannabis in any form from one cannabis user or one cannabis business to another. Then there are the dispensaries, which dispenses the cannabis user. The craft grow is a hybrid of a cannabis cultivation center and an infuser, and by statute, they are allowed to have a dispensary. There are restrictions on the size of the dispensary, but as a craft grow, they are the only business outside of a dispensary itself that has the ability to dispense. There are certain qualifications that they need to meet per state statute, to which that is, that type of designation will be given according to, according to the state law. So because of the fact that a craft grow can have a dispensary, staff suggested the HB2 zoning, given that the types of businesses, retail businesses that are also allowed in the highway business district are also allowed in HB2 districts. With the dispensaries, staff suggested in the form that you were referencing, for dispensaries to be allowed in the HB district, but given the location of our highway business districts to residential properties, the staff felt that HB2s would be ideal for the craft grows only.
Okay. And dispensing?
And dispensing, yes.
So do craft growers have to dispense?
They don't have to dispense.
They may.
They can, but they don't have to.
That answers the question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. In this ordinance, we've singled out hospital zones, thinking probably primarily of cancer treatment center. Do we, do we know if the cancer treatment center in town here is considering the possibility of dispensing cannabis and having onsite consumption? Are we just putting this in the ordinance so that they can if they want to? Administrator Nagel?
We don't know. We did want to adopt the zoning, though, to exclude the possibility if they, if they wanted to do that as a possibility for cancer patients, they would, again, apply for a special use permit under this with all their conditions, go through the state licensing, just like everyone else for security plans, et cetera. They may have no interest in this whatsoever, but if we exempted it from the zoning, it doesn't even provide an opportunity for them. That's a business decision for them to make.
When someone applies for a special use permit for any of these cannabis businesses, will they have to meet the requirements in our zoning ordinance 102-236, which requires will they have to meet the requirements in our zoning ordinance 102-236, which requires signage to be put up, notification of neighbors, and hearings?
All that process would have to be?
Okay. So we didn't do that in changing the zoning ordinance here, because I just want to make sure this is correct. We're following section 102-237, where we don't have to do that notification. Is that right?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I address?
You may.
I am not as familiar with the citations and sections of your code, but yes, this is a different type of procedure, because this is a citywide rezoning, rather than a special use for a certain location. If I miss anything, I'll defer Mr. Chair to either the economic development director or the city administrator or the building commissioner. But yes, this is a different type of relief, and it's based upon a change in the verbiage of code, rather than a special use, that is a different level of hearings to be processed, essentially because of the people that are being involved, the same reason you said additional hearings.
All right. So if a cannabis business wanted to open up in the, along 173, where the newer storefronts are, there's a daycare there. If any of those businesses in that section objected to a cannabis business in those buildings, if I'm reading the ordinances correctly, that would require a supermajority vote of the council if there's an objection to a cannabis business by?
Would that be by the zoning commission? You'd have to have a supermajority.
Oh, okay, that's the zoning commission, that we have to have a supermajority.
Correct.
All right. If there's an objection?
If they deny it, then we need a supermajority at councils to override it, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. So it seems to me that there are safeguards put in place so that cannabis businesses won't be allowed to locate in sensitive areas. The ordinance itself, I think, could have been a little bit tighter in regards to that, created more buffer zones and maybe even wider buffer zones. But I just want to make sure, if I vote in favor of this, we'll have the opportunity to deny special use permits if businesses want to locate in sensitive areas. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. All right. Can I please call the roll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frayerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 8F, Consider Zoning Docket 19-Z-6, requesting a text amendment to section 102-58, parentheses A, parentheses 1 of the Zion Municipal Code to delete banquet facilities in section 102.58, parentheses 5 to require a special use permit per Director Iantin, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff is recommending that we approve the text amendment to delete banquet facilities from section 102-58A1, as a permit used and add to section 102-585, requiring a special use program in the municipal code. At the number 7, 2019, by the zoning commission, they recommended to approve the text amendment.
Is there a motion?
Need a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
What I read in the minutes, Director Iantin, is that the main issue here was about parking. Is that the issue with the?
We're trying to get a little more directly at the parking lot better.
Yes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frayerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number nine, discussion and authorization on approval. Item 9A, consider approval of Amen and Shaw Solutions LLC, 3355 Sheridan Road, application to participate in the CDVG Commercial Sign and Facade and Improvement Program per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You've seen this grant before. We're basically the administrators of the grant, so we just take the applications, oversee the project, make sure everything's in compliance, but there's no cost to the city under this grant. We make the dispersment of the grant once everything's finalized, and then we get reimbursement under the, or we make a dispersment to the applicant, and then we get a reimbursement of the grant for that. It's a first come, first served. There's a lot of restrictions on that for signage, facade, et cetera. So there are funds remaining under the grant currently, and the application before you is for signage, basically the Kmart Plaza sign, as well as just north of that, further than Dollar General on the east side of Sheridan, just south of the country and in Sweets entrance there. So two signs for improvement. There's funds left in the grant balance to cover this, and they need all the requirements for application, so I would recommend approval of the application for grant, as presented. Any amount of 15, not to exceed 15 dollars.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frayerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 9B, Consider Alley Vacation Request per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Fisher. Attached is an application request from the owner of Zion Associates LP and LLC for several right-of-way vacations in the 2700 block of Hebron Avenue. The alleys requested to be vacated are currently used for access, parking, and trash enclosures. Hebron Avenue is a dead end and is used as a fire lane for multiple buildings. The use after vacation will be the same with additional use of Hebron Avenue as green space. The city does not utilize the property with the exception of utilities, so public utility easements must remain. Additionally, along with the application, the applicant has submitted a memo requesting the vacation fees are waived in the vacation of the city's right-of-way if it's granted. Estimated cost for legal and recording fees is not to exceed $750. Additional, a cost per square foot, based from the current assessed land value of the abutting properties, the estimated right-of-way cost was $32,307.22, for a total estimated cost of $33,057.22. The applicant requested a vacation request in 2014. Council approved this request, however, the applicant failed to pay the vacation fees and record the plat of vacation. Plats are not, plats that are not recorded within 45 days of approval become null and void. The action tonight is strictly for preliminary approval, if council so chooses. Staff will inform the applicant of council's decision and determine if they still desire to proceed with the application and the cost. Representative for Zion Associates, Mr. Mark Iden, would like to present the memo to waive the vacation fees and answer any questions the council may have.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Iden. I'm the attorney for this development. This is Tim DeBrulier. He's one of the principals.
Good evening.
One of the principals of the owner of the property, known as Hebron Apartments, or Hebron Townhomes apartment. Yeah. This was, stop me if I'm starting to elaborate on things that you already know, but this was a, this development's been around for a long time. The DeBrulier Company has owned it since approximately 2000, is that?
Actually, 1992, I believe.
Oh, 1992. And we came before you in 2014 because we wanted to create a plan to, and a development that would allow for a recreation center on a vacant lot and to vacate some of the property. That did, even though it was approved, it didn't come to fruition for various reasons. Well, we're back, and this time we are looking, and this will be the subject of another proceeding, this is by way of background, we'll be presenting a plat of subdivision without a PUD because the rec center is, is yet not decided. But as part of that overall plan for subdivision of the property, we would, we thought it would be good to unify all the property boundaries, given that there are many right-of-way alleys within and adjacent to the development. If you agree with our plan for vacation, then that would determine the boundaries of our subdivision. Legally, there are a lot of little pieces, but practically speaking, and for decades, all of the property that we're talking about, whether owned by the DeBrulier Company or in the nature of streets and alleys, have been used exclusively for this development. And the way this arises is that, as you may know, Zion was fully planned before it was improved. And according to Wikipedia, that, this is one of the few in the world, believe it or not. But it also eventually, as time progresses, leads to some dead ends and some rights-of-way that are never used, and that becomes, practically speaking, it becomes used as private property, regardless of ownership. It's just kind of the, at least the history of this property. I have presented a right-of-way vacation application, and my argument why we would like a waiver of fees, and I'd just like to know if all of you have that, or if I should go through the maps and things that are attached to that. Ray said that he has given everyone that. If so, if not, I can give you all those maps to refresh your memory and might help guide the discussion?
We have it.
Oh, you do? Okay. If you look, the one plan that's on there is a markup of the 2014 plat of vacation. And the only modifications to that are, we were going to vacate the north half of 28th Street, which is actually used for park purposes. There would be really no sense in our taking ownership of that, because it is currently part of the connection of the park to the west, the name escapes me, to the Robert McCleary Bike Trail. And there is indeed a public path in 28th Street, both the north and the south half. So for us to take title to that would probably not be consistent with the uses, and so what we are asking to do is take that off the vacation plan, and furthermore, to assist if the village ever vacates it to the Park District or some other entity, we would consent to that. And, you know, under the vacation law, when you vacate property, it basically goes to one half to the owners on either side. We would waive any right on a vacation, so that you could freely dispose of all of 28th Street the way you would like. So really, the long and short of this is that that portion of 28th Street really should not fall into private hands. We don't want it, and I don't think it's suitable for us to own with the park path in it. On the western edge of the property, well, on the eastern edge, there's a 22-foot wide alley. On the western edge, there's an 11-foot alley, and then a segment of another 11 feet that doesn't run the entire distance between 27th and 28th. That would, that parcel, if you see, it's outlined in green, if you have color copies, would just be kind of no man's land. The city would own it. They would have whatever responsibilities there are with respect to ownership. We actually use it. So contrary to the 2014 plan, we thought in this vacation, that should be included, not only to match the use, but we don't want to leave a parcel out there. Now, normally, when you make these vacations, that property would go to the owner to the west, but I understand that's been discussed internally, and vacating it to us would be legally possible and feasible. So in doing all of this, in this whole Hebron Townhomes apartments, all of the rights-of-way that go through the middle, that traverse the property slightly east to west, and then the alleys on the west side go away, the plat of subdivision takes all of this in, and it is private property, and the city no longer would have any kind of public ownership or responsibility that goes with public ownership. So I guess the first part of tonight's discussion is that does that newly aligned set of vacated parcels make sense to the council? I know you didn't really sit through the 2014 process, but the plat of vacation that you see without my markups is what we had originally intended. So 28th Street, we were going to take, and the west piece of the alley, we were not going to take, for the reasons that I just discussed, which is we have no business owning 28th Street, and we don't want to leave no man's land on the west side. We agree to take that, and in fact, we are using it. So I think back in 2014, we didn't think this through all the way, and when I looked at it again, I thought this was a better realignment of the vacation parcels. You probably, you probably don't much care about this, because you didn't, you may not have been on the council at that time. I'm just trying to show you how this historically progressed, and that we think we have a better way of defining the vacated parcels.
Director Roberts?
So the plat, the vacated properties that they're requesting is shown without 28th Street. So that's not even included in this.
In 2014, were you required to pay the vacation fee?
Well, can we get to that as part two? Okay. I just want to know if that makes sense, because I have to have a surveyor prepare a plat of vacation to submit to you when we formally address this. And it's, there's no real big change here. What I'm trying to do is make the vacation parcels reflect reality when they really didn't in 2014.
So I think our city council are?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm hesitant to have the board take a straw poll, a straw poll, vote on what you think is the best plan to be.
Okay.
So I'm going to advise them not to engage you at this point in time. We can go forward with the due diligence on this, and I just want to be very clear on a couple of things. I think your request here is twofold. One, is to waive the fees or have us consider waiving the fees at this point in time. And two, will we consider going forward with the vacation? We are not here with a plat of vacation before us tonight, but are we going to go forward with it? So I think there's two questions, and I want my board, my council, including the mayor and the clerk, to be very clear while we're here tonight.
Yeah.
This is important. They're not, so to sum up, they're not going to take a straw poll vote.
Okay.
And there's two issues. Number one, are they going to consider waiving the fees from 2014? That won't happen unless, before we make that ask. And number two, would they go forward with even considering the vacation, even though that's not for us, if I knew tonight?
I agree.
That's our council?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, if you were to give me a straw poll, that would be great. I would have more information, but I'm not requiring it or demanding it in any sort. It's more for information, for this evening's purposes. Okay, number two, when property is vacated, where the city effectively is great, taking ownership out of its name and placing it in private ownership, and if you really want to knock it down to its basics, the city's selling us property they own that they probably don't need and that we've been using. The city says, in many instances, we want money for our property. But you also have in your vacation package a specific statement that an owner can petition for the fees to be waived. And I was excited when I saw that, because I considered that in appropriate circumstances, that may indeed be a possibility. And we, in fact, are asking for that, and I, you do have my reasons that I set forth, as you've acknowledged, but I just wanted to go through a few quickly. These streets and alleys- These streets and alleys are, are total dead ends and they've only been used by us. When we consolidate them, we'll have a consolidated subdivision, which I've said before. The city really has done very little to maintain any of this. And I, I don't know if any have been out there recently, but it's pretty beaten up. And I understand that you would perform pothole repairs if they were serious enough to warrant that and perhaps some snow plowing, but there is no active maintenance really going on out there by the city. When the water main was repaired within Hebron Avenue, it was replaced and the, the surface was never restored. And now, to be fair, I've had discussions with Ray and he said, well, we thought eventually you'd be taking it over anyway and working on it. But to me, that's just more evidence that the real nature of this property has been pri- private property essentially for, for decades. What we want to do, we not only want to gain title, but then we want to take a good section of Hebron, which lies between the rows of townhome buildings, take out all the old dilapidated improvements, put in grass cre- take out curb and gutter and asphalt, put in a, a grasscrete weight-bearing surface for emergency vehicles and then allow the grass to grow through. And, and that will lend a courtyard-type experience between the buildings. It'll be good for the residents. It'll brighten the, the, the place up a little bit because there just won't be a lot of asphalt laying around. And, and this is all in conjunction with an effort to, to improve these buildings, both inside and out, which I'll get into. I provided a list to you with my materials that showed the improvements that we're intending on making and they're, they're very significant. There will be some exterior elements and a lot of interior mechanical replacements and repairs. It will be a better environment for the residents and I think externally, it will be a, a better environment for the city. You know, as each property owner up, upgrades their property, if, you know, everybody did so eventually, you have a lot of improvements that reflect well. So what we're saying is basically, we've treated this as if we've owned and operated it. And the city has had no real, has exercised no real control over the maintenance or, or upkeep of the roadways. We intend to actually take the biggest segment of roadway out, create a, a grassed courtyard. So what we're asking is that, that you waive the vacation fees because we feel that we're making significant improvements. And in fact, I, I think it's kind of a zero-sum game. Whatever we spend on vacation, we, we don't spend on, on the other items that are listed here. I hope that doesn't come across as any kind of aggressive statement, but I, I'm just saying that we have a pot of money and we can either give it to you or we can, you know, improve the property exterior. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. And I, I have Tim here. He knows very much about the property. And maybe he can give you just a couple of minutes on what they propose to do and then you guys can give us any feedback that you might want to or indicate whether or not you even want to go through with this or whether we should, you know, draft plans. Go ahead, Tim.
Good evening, again. My name's Tim De Brueller. I'm with the De Brueller Company. Actually, the property is owned by a partnership, including my father and about 16 other partners, Zion Associates LLC. And we're in the process right now of actually transferring ownership from that partnership to myself and four other partners. Part of this process, and just to kind of explain the back, backstory of why in 2014 this didn't go through, is we went through a competitive round of tax credits at Ida. It was a 9% application for tax credits. It's a competitive process. We didn't win the credits at that point. It's, you know, very competitive. We didn't get the 9% credits and that's why that deal never was consummated. This time around, we're actually going through what's called a 4% tax credit deal, which basically provides some of the equity to do the improvements. And that's not a competitive process. It's a matter of, does the deal work? And is there volume bond cap, which there's, there's plenty of that. And so we're not worried about being able to close this transaction, which is why we're bringing it back. And, you know, we believe that the improvements that we're going to be making out there will enhance the area. And again, it's, it's, if we spend the $32,000 in fees or we spend it on the property, I, I believe it's better spent, you know, on the property to make those improvements. That's, that's what we're saying. So.
So I, this is informational. Any feedback you might want to give us with regard to whether the vacation, you even want to proceed? And if you have any opinions on the, our request for fee waiver with advice of council, we'd appreciate it.
I want to ask a question of the Director Iain. Is it possible to lease this property?
Yeah, anything's possible. We haven't looked into that. We haven't discussed it at all.
I thought the lease rate on the other one was pretty good. We'd take that.
I mean, why don't you think about that?
Well, we will. I mean, if you think that that is something you want to do. I, you don't have to answer now. I understand your concerns.
We're not bound by a prior lease rate on any future leases or whatever leases out there. So before we start writing leases, I have a lease rate for one specific property for another one. I prefer we just, we just, we address the question before this.
Yeah, that was a joke.
I just want to make sure that there's not any confusion. I apologize. I understand where you're coming from. I also don't want there to be any implication that we agreed tonight to lease a property for $250.
No, no, I, I meant that as to be comical actually, but we would consider a lease. The only problem with doing so is that we wanted to consolidate title to place it all within a single plat of subdivision for a single use. And I, I thought that would probably be clean from the city's standpoint. But if, if leasing works for you, we're, we're more than happy to discuss it.
One of the other things we're trying to do is consolidate all the pins. There's, I think, 27 different pins. And so when we do our taxes, we get 27 different tax bills. And it's administrative burden on us and probably the county as well. And we would just like to consolidate the pins so there's just one tax bill to deal with. And that's a minor thing, but that's, that's part of the reasoning here as well.
But it's a very odd layout. Some buildings, instead of the whole building, which is sitting on its own lot, being a tax parcel, you'll have a single lot and you'll have half the building with one pin number and then four others for units that are apartments. It must be some historical circumstance that caused that. But what we're trying to do is clean up an entire area, consolidate everything into a lot, get rid of all the tax parcels, get a single pin for it, put it in a subdivision. Just, it's got a lot of historical oddities that we figure we can just draw a line around and get a subdivision and, and, you know, clean it up. It's just one more historical artifact that becomes into the modern era.
I had a couple of questions. So with the intended improvements, how far are you down that path? And when, when do you intend to complete those?
So I was supposed to have information tonight. Our deal went through Ida's loan committee. And Ida is the one who wants to underwrite the project and provide the 4% tax credits. So it was pushed off till tomorrow, unfortunately. And I should have better information at the end of this week where we're at. Now, if they decide that, yeah, it's on the docket coming up in the next month or so. If we close, let's say, it probably wouldn't close until the spring. Just by the way, everything has to transpire in between the time they say yes, let's go ahead. And then to close it takes a long time. And we're probably looking at starting next spring or early summer.
Well, part of the reason I ask that is, do you have any estimates on the cost of that project?
Right now, we've submitted a budget that's right around $2.5 million.
For?
For the improvements.
Improvements?
That's inside and out?
Inside and out. That includes things like putting in heat pumps. Right now, the units are heated by baseboard electrical heat. One of the improvements we want to make is to put in forced air heat pumps. And so the tenants actually have air conditioning in, in the summertime, which they, most of them don't right now.
And by chance, I'm not familiar with the exact mapping, but does this property fall within the opportunity zone?
Unfortunately, it's right across the street.
Okay.
And they don't give any leeway on that.
Another thing I would like to add in that timeframe. What we would like to do between now and the time that the loan documents are completed and funded is to have an appropriate legal description for those documents. And if it's all these different tax parcels and lot numbers, so be it. But if we can make it, you know, lot one and whatever subdivision with a single pin number, our mortgage lender will see that as being much cleaner. There's no dual property ownership. And then they can just package that into an easy, you know, it works well for everyone. When it's cleaned up, it, it falls into place. We will be coming back, obviously, for this vacation petition. And at, at that time, we'll also submit our plat of subdivision and our request for subdivision. Again, no PUD this time because the conditions driving that are no longer applicable. And we'd say, you know, please vacate. Then we'd say, here's our plat of subdivision, which includes the vacated parcels. And let's pass the plat of subdivision. I then hand that to my lender. Lender says, ah, this is great. This is clean. Lot one and so-and-so subdivision, single pin. And it all, it all goes well. It's a, it's a, it's a good cleanup operation, I think. Thank you.
Our, our legal council has a couple of questions.
Yes.
In such a form of your prayer for relief, you said that these owners would waive their rights. Obviously, understanding vacations in the state of Illinois, the, as we stated there previously, that is divided in half between the two. When your client approached, is it across the demonstration, he said that the ownership group was changing.
The, I'm sorry, the what?
It's not changing as of this time. It will change once we get the bonds and tax credits. At that point, it changes because that, that's actually going to be a sale.
Okay.
Right. The board, the board received a prayer for relief that the ownership group said they would waive the certain right. And then during that, during your statement, you said the ownership group was changing. I want to make sure that it's clear that the people actually have the right, that it would be the same ownership group waiving for this whole process.
Yes. And, and so if it were today, it would be one owner. Whoever actually owns the parcel at the time would do the releasing.
And what is your, do you have the Ida application number? Because obviously, we as a governmental body often track state actions that affect our municipality. Do you have the Ida number going forward for us to be able to track that? Because, I mean, obviously, it would have been nice to know the outcome of that here today. It's almost premature not knowing what the outcome of that is. Or that would provide a lot of information for this body as to where the project is going. I think that's a fair thing.
Correct. And we have a PID, which is the, it's basically a preliminary identifier because the PPA was submitted.
Sure.
And then there, I should be getting the word any day now that they need the complete application. So we don't have that as of yet.
Okay. And you would be able to know, you would have job to keeping the board enthused as to where you're at with this process?
Not at all.
And I think that's a fair thing to ask from the city council to say this is part of the overall development, to see how this is, for lack of a better word, evolving through this, because it's contingent. It's actually a project based on that.
Yeah, and...
The, yes, the substantial rehab is basically depends on closing the 4% bond, the tax credit transaction. Correct.
And we've worked well with Ray and Rich. And any of those things you want to, you know, you can ask them to communicate to us because we have a regular channel or you can just call us directly as things progress and we can give you the information as needed.
I'm not sure what action we're, we're supposed to take tonight with this. I was gonna, with all the information that's been flowing back and forth, I was gonna...
Summarize what...
No, I was gonna ask the same question, so. You beat me to the punch, so.
Well, I, I know the, the city attorney is not going to let you really take any action. And I appreciate that because that's not what we're here for. What we're trying to determine that before we draw plans for our ultimate application, we, we want to know what land we're dealing with. And that can be a next, you know, formal vacation hearing if you want. Or if you say, well, at least the land area you're, you're describing sounds reasonable, I will then have the surveyor prepare a new plat of vacation and the subdivision document outlining the entire property, which would include our private property and the roads that you would vacate to us. Now, whether you in fact do all of that, that's my risk. I just don't want to prepare documents and then have to redo them because we didn't have any kind of understanding as to this is what you should present to us, but not this is what we'll approve. I mean, I know the approval process is separate. I just want to get a good feeling for the land we're dealing with so when I file the application, I have the documents correct.
Basically, council, basically council is approving the direction to go forward with the vacation with waiver of fees or non-waiver fees. Upon that decision, then we'll be discussed to see where the applicant, which direction they would want to go. If, if it's not waiting, it would go back to the applicant to say, do you still want to go forward with the vacation?
So Director, excuse me, Administrator Nabel.
Since we're talking here, I think I throw my two cents in. Personally, I don't have a problem with the vacation. It's obviously council's decision. Now, I'm going to take my administrator hat off and throw my finance director hat on. And our budget situation is no secret as far as our financial situation goes. And I say this with all due respect. I appreciate the investment. It's definitely, and anyone taking care of the property is for the betterment of the community as a whole. I understand that, but I also believe that we have an obligation to residents as, as, on a whole, when we have public property, that we are now submitting for private use, that there is a compensation for that that can be used to offset some of the budget issues that the community is bearing as a whole. My community as a whole does benefit, like I said, from improved property. It looks better. Property values go up, absolutely. But from a budget standpoint and a obligation to residents as a whole, that is public property. It is, it is owned by the community that we are now putting it in private use. And I think there should be compensation for that from a financial standpoint. So that's just my, my perspective on this to consider going forward.
I, I agree with you. I think with all the information that's come out, it seems premature, as our council stated, because it sounds like this whole project is contingent, you know, again, upon your approval and application. So if we were to decide to vacate tonight and that doesn't go through, then where does that leave?
Well, I'm not, I, I, in fact, anything you would tell us, we would not take as a decision whether to vacate or not, that in the event you vacate, this is the appropriate layout. These are the appropriate vacated parcels, which I, I think makes absolutely infinite sense. But since you see so many things, you know, you, you may not have dialed in yet on, on what we're asking you to do. And I appreciate a hundred percent. I'm also asking that since this has always been treated as private property and the, the city really hasn't exercised or, or performed a lot of maintenance obligations or anything like that, it really has been... that, it really has been treated as private property and therefore, we would like to not have to pay to buy what essentially has been run as private property and then use that money to invest in the project. I mean, it's no more complicated than that, I guess.
I would ask the question, in recent history, has there been a vacation request of this size similar to this?
Historically, council has never waived the vacation fees unless it's another government entity.
But I mean, just looking at the parcel itself, have we ever vacated this much property?
We have this amount with the hospital.
With the hospital, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I am personally not prepared to approve with vacation of the fee. So is it a fair motion to table it until a future meeting after we get more information on the application and see where things play out?
I think that's fair.
I do too. Because, I mean, essentially, what you're asking for is a straw poll on this.
I'm sorry.
Essentially, what you're asking for...
No, and I took, I understand what the city attorney was saying, and he said he didn't want you to take any straw poll.
That's what you're asking?
No, no, what I'm saying is, I really would like to hear it, but it may be premature. I just wanted to introduce the concepts, and if anyone wanted to talk about it, I'd get a greater understanding as to what your feelings are. But there's nothing binding whatsoever in anything that you say we understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there's a motion to go away for a second.
Second.
And do we need to decide which meeting at this point, or will that be determined at a later date?
We cannot table things. That's a good point, Commissioner. We cannot table things indefinitely. That's essentially Robert's rules way of killing something. I would recommend that we table it for the second, if we're going to table to a date certain, we table it to the second meeting in December for the understanding that the state, unlike the city of Zion, who is a little slowly sometimes, and I give the petitioner and applicant some time to come back with feedback from us or to us to be able to give a more educated answer upon that question. So I'm sure this is a clarification of the motion that you made, Commissioner, so you seconded it, that we table it to the second meeting in December.
Given that, thanks for your presentation.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate that. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Could I ask one thing on that date? What is it that you would like to hear from us?
You may.
Mr. Chairman, council, if you, I believe this is about the last or second to last action item, and there's going to be some committee reports. I'm going to stick around for a little bit. I think, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me to indulge council after the board meeting, I'll take five minutes and take them through some thoughts.
Would it be appropriate that I just give you a call later in the week, or?
A call or an email would be great.
Okay. You don't have a card handy, do you?
I prefer not to hold up the meeting. I'll pass you my number right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you all.
All right. All right, moving right along. Item 9C, consider renewal for liability and crime insurance for period 12/15, 19 through 4/30, 20 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We'll take the last action item on a high note here with some good news. Our current law enforcement liability expires December 15th of this year. So our brokers, Assurance Agency LLC, went out to market for us with our existing underwriters' Kinsale as well as Travelers. We went to Travelers a few years ago for all of our liability and umbrella. They were interested in quoting on the law enforcement liability. You can see on page five of the proposal that our expiring, our current premium is $116,104 annually. Kinsale said they would renew at $108,023. Travelers, what we wanted to do is try and get our policies on a fiscal year basis rather than calendar year. So what Travelers is, they said, we'll bridge that policy from December 15th to April, to May 1st of 2020, and then renew annually from that point on. And their quote was $18,800 to bridge that, and then their annualized premium would be $50,000. So we're looking at a $66,000 reduction in our annual law enforcement liability premium. So our crime policy also expires December of 19, and this is just informational, saying we're under a three-year term for that fixed rate. It's just renewing at the same premium of $2,230. So I would recommend that we renew with Kinsale in the amount of $18,795 to bridge down to May 1st of 2020 up there.
And with Travelers?
Travelers, thank you. Yes. I would not make the recommendation to spend an extra $66,000.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the renewal.
Second. Is there a discussion? I think Administrator Nabel said it all. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number 10, departmental commentary. UN Resources Director Karen Graves, anything for us this evening?
City Administrator Nabel and I met this afternoon. So in the next several months, look forward to strategizing how to make the city of Zion a great place to work. So the next several months, look forward to that. Additionally, we have one opportunity that is available now, account technologists working in our accounting and financial department from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. will be the days and hours Monday to Friday. Our qualifications that we're looking for is someone that has at least two years or more of accounting and business experience. We would prefer to have a college degree in accounting business or another related field. We definitely want someone who has some experience with dealing with the public. So that is our current opening. It is available online. Resume and employee applications are currently being accepted until Friday at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Director Ayington?
Thank you, Your Honor. We finally completed all the demolitions except for the final grading. Their schedule is to start bringing in top soil on Thursday, weather permitting, and start doing the final grading. Hopefully, the next couple of weeks will be on per se complete.
And how many demolitions? Were there, were there five?
Total of four.
Total of four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Roberts?
Another burning question for everybody is the LEAF program.
We had nothing to do with the weather.
Last week, the program was suspended. I know there's a lot of questions on how long they are, if they were going to complete. I have talked with Advance. They have assured me that every resident will receive the four pickups. If that takes them into December, that will take them into December. It's been going a little slow. Going into, yesterday, Monday, they started the program back up. They were already two days behind schedule. So I'm figuring they're going to go into the first week of December.
Again, Director Roberts, we want to make sure our residents understand that the LEAF should be piled in the parkway, not on the streets.
Yes. Driving around today, there's a lot of LEAFs in the streets. There's, you need every resident's help with that, getting them raked up and onto the parkway. The contractor is trying to get up what he can right there. He'll do the gutter right now, just because there's so many LEAFs out there, but he's not going to do the whole stuff.
Director Roberts, mildly comment this evening. Next time, could you direct us to a Hawaii vacation instead of an alley vacation?
I may hit the lottery wall, but...
All right. Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be at the December 2nd meeting, so I'm going to promote my December Dollars and Cents series early this time. The second Tuesday of every month, I do, it's all good, at 6:00, discussion for the public to come out, just a different topic every month, the chance to kind of learn a little more about what the city does. I also open it up to just general questions about, I think you might have about city operations, why we do what we do, the decisions behind it. The topic for December 10th at 6:00, and it's all good, will be economic development. I did that seminar, or that series last year as well. You hear a lot of, why don't we have a Starbucks, or what's going on here, there? And there's all sorts of reasons behind all of those decisions. There's also a lot of ideas and misconceptions on what the city is responsible for as far as bringing in businesses, economic development versus private parties, private ownership issues. So if you want to learn about economic development or just have questions in general about what we do, please feel free to come on out.
Thank you. Chief Lloyd?
With Thanksgiving right around the corner, many of our residents are probably preparing to break out those turkey fryers. Over the years, we've lost a handful of garages over turkey fryers. Just remember, never use a turkey fryer in your garage. Keep it far away from anything combustible. Couple tips, fill it with water first. Put your turkey in it, see how far the water rises. That's where your oil level should be, rather than filling it with too much oil and having it hot oil splatter everything. Then just make sure your turkey is thawed completely before you put it in. If you have a turkey that's still frozen, that water, when it hits the hot oil, will instantaneously turn to steam and expand 1,700 times its original volume, and you will have an explosion of hot oil everywhere. So always be careful with the turkey fryers. But enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, citizens, just to give you a little report, one of the things that we started looking at when I assumed roles chief in June was how our patrol districts were divided. I've been here almost 28 years, and we've had three patrol districts, two on the east side, and everything basically west of Galilee has been one patrol district. Obviously, anybody who's been in town for any length of time knows, we've experienced a lot of growth out there. We've always staffed that with more officers, but we have just about completed a study to even out our districts in terms of call volume and to divide that into a fourth patrol district, probably north of 21st Street and west of Galilee. So there's still some programming for community communications to do on the back end, but we'll probably start going to that January 1st. That's not without some murmurings and some growing pains, because it's a little bit like restricting your kids to one room of the house. But I do think it's probably going to produce more effective policing for our residents. People, our officers will know both the residents and the problems in each district a little better. We'll see the city from about 5,000 feet instead of 20,000 feet, so I hope that'll produce some measurable improvements for us. And to touch on a little bit on what Administrator Nabel said regarding the liability and crime insurance, certainly, the police department plays a part in that. And that's not to my credit, to credit the people who came before me in adopting best practices and supervising our officers properly so we manage the hybrids to them as well. But I also wanted to just acknowledge that this reduction of premium is also largely due to the actions of the previous council. Several members were part of that council, taking the tough actions they did to defend the officers and defend the city when we were right, had a large factor in bringing our premiums down. So I do appreciate that from the council, and wanted you guys to recognize the benefits of those tough decisions you made back in those days.
Thank you, Chief. Just winding down here, one of the things I'd like to reiterate, as I do at most of the council meetings, is that Administrator Nabel talked about the meetings that he has to talk about the city's finances very openly with our residents. We also have a Zion Community Solutions Meeting, which happens every month. And it's been an effort, just a change of administration, for us to get out and have our citizens learn more about what we're doing in the city. Our group has grown, the people that come out, these people also, our residents, also make suggestions to us in the city. We don't, we don't claim to know everything. And we listen to what people have to say in the community, and we try to implement those into our practices each and every day. So for those of you that haven't attended one of the meetings with Administrator Nabel or our Zion Community Solutions Meeting, please come out to those. Those are critical, as we're trying to make sure that what we're doing is transparent, number one, and that you have a chance to ask the city officials running the day-to-day operations and out in the field exactly what's going on in your city. Item number 11 is announcements, November 28th and 29th, city offices close for the Thanksgiving holiday. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. And one of the things that I always think that I'm thankful for, while we always tend to be thankful for the great things we have, I'm also thankful for the struggles that we have. And I guess one of the things that Frederick Douglass said many years ago in 1798, without struggles, there can't be progress. And one of the things that I'm very fortunate to feel as a mayor, that I have such an outstanding council to work with, and department heads and people in the city that are helping us work through the very difficult times that our city is having in so many different ways. So stay with us, we're working hard at it. Continue to believe in us and help us, as we will continue to believe in you and try to help you. December 3rd at 7:00 p.m., Zion City Council Meeting. December 17th, 6:15 p.m., Zion Township Board Meeting. And December 17th at 7:00 p.m., Zion City Council Meeting. Item number 12 is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Thank you all for coming out this evening.
No!
Exactly.
Is that what it was? That is so funny.